We'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Weber County Commission Board Commission Meeting on this 22nd day of October, Tuesday. We welcome you all here today. Our invocation this morning will be given by Commissioner Jim Harvey, Pledge of Allegiance by Daniel Wade, and the Thought of the Day by Commissioner Forre. So we'll go to that point.
Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you. Father in Heaven, as we assemble this morning to do the work of the county, we're grateful, Father in Heaven, for this opportunity. We're grateful, Father in Heaven, to live in a free nation. For those who have and still preserve our freedoms, we pray for our nation, Father in Heaven, and for the leaders thereon that they will make good decisions based on truths and integrity. We pray, Father in Heaven, that we'll ourselves act in a similar manner. We ask Thee, Father in Heaven, for a blessing on our, not just our residents, but also on our land. We are enjoying a wonderful prosperity. We pray that we'll be able to do so, and as we grow, we'll do so wisely with care and concern for those who live here. And this is our prayer we ask, in the name of the Savior, even Jesus Christ, amen.
Mr. Forre?
And a couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity, Gordy and I attended an event at Wolf Creek with Bruce Summerhays Sr., and got to listen to him, his life story, a little bit. And I don't know if you know much about Bruce Summerhays, but he was an avid golfer, did a lot of sports, very good athlete. Actually turned pro in 1966. But he did not go pro on the circuit until later on, until actually the seniors tour for a couple of reasons. He mentioned that, number one, he had a young family, and he had church duties, so he put off going on tour until the seniors in, well, probably the 1990 era. And so here's a person that actually had the skills and the ability to go out and earn a lot of money, but put that off for family reasons and family purpose. But when he did hit the tour, and he talked about golfing with all the players we know, Lee Trevino, Arnold, Jack Nicholas, and told some great stories about that. One of the stories that he told remembered very vividly is, I think it was either his first or second tournament that he won, and he had to make a four-foot putt to win it. The person that was in the, that could have tied or actually won the event if he'd missed the putt was in the clubhouse. And he tells the story that he sank that putt, and people from the clubhouse said, and I don't remember the player's name in the clubhouse, said, "He stood up and cheered for you when you made that putt." And he said, "I tried very hard after that to make sure that when the competition came down to the end, that I cheered for that person because I knew for a fact that that competition made me better." And so he changed his attitude from that point on and said, "The competition is good." And it brought back memories in my previous life where I did a lot of running races and some competitions. Some of those races, I'd pass people the last half-mile, mile, maybe 200 yards. Sometimes I'd get passed. But at the finish line, we always seemed to high-five each other and had camaraderie because that said that that competition, at the end of the race, is what makes a person better. Competition makes us better, Commissioner. That's my thought.
That's a great thought, Commissioner. You know, I remember when Bruce Summerhays won that tournament, his very first one. And he was kind of overcome with emotion on that day.
He was, yeah.
Yeah, I remember that very, very well.
Quite a story he has to tell. And, well, from a family standpoint, and the other thing he said is he never traveled without his wife, which I thought was very touching.
Yeah, that's good. Well, thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioner Forre. All right. We now have public comment. For those who've come to address us today, we'd like to give you the opportunity to stand up and talk a little bit about what's on the agenda today or items you have concern of. So just state your name and where you live and go at it.
Sylvia Salisbury. I live in Ogden, 655 14th Street. In our property tax notice, I noticed that something about taxes going up next year. Mine went up a lot this year, and I'd like to know more about that.
Thanks, Sylvia. We will be addressing that shortly on our agenda. Miranda, did you have something to comment today?
I did, sir. Miranda Menzies, 3807 North Elk Ridge Trail, Eden. I'd also like to comment about the tax levy, but I'd first like to note Gage Forro's comments about Bruce Summerhays. I started playing golf about four years ago, kind of late after, as a social thing. That man teaches the best sports lesson I have come across from anywhere in any sport. He is a superb teacher, and boy can he hit a golf ball. I've watched him play the seventh hole and nearly put his drive off the protease on the green, and that is a par five, no, it's a par four, but it's extremely long hill, uphill. So, great player. I'd like to comment on the municipal services. I should want to start out by saying Scott Park provided me some information, and I tried to track back through multiple budgets, multiple years of budgets. It's extremely difficult to do so, but I will attempt again to have a shot at that through the financial reports of the county. I did note that the municipal services revenue has steadily increased from $5 million in 2012 up to now $7 million in 2018, and I'm not sure what the year-to-date is this year. However, I thought that I would find that a lot of this was due to the effect of Summit, so I tracked the number of miradi projects in Summit, and I discovered that they, in fact, peaked in 2016 and were exactly mirrored by the number of projects within Wolf Creek. So if people say this is just due to the planning effect from Summit, I don't think that's quite right, and I would ask them to just think again that there's a lot of other projects going on. But there's a lot more in Summit and Wolf Creek combined than anywhere else in Ogden Valley, and I really couldn't say I didn't look at West Weaver. I would like to say that you're talking about a shortfall of $300,000. If you look on Airbnb and VRBO, you will find large numbers of rental accommodation in Ogden Valley. On Airbnb alone, there are approximately 100. It's actually like 94, but the point is that if you look at the average cost of those, which is around $200 a night, and you think about 15% transient tax that should be paid, the amount of transient tax that should be collected from those properties is probably $300,000 a year or more. So your shortfall that you're moaning about in your general services fund, actually there's money going to the tourism tax, or should be if you are collecting it, not to mention all of the properties that are not actually being taxed at the full rate. They're getting homestead exemptions because they're claiming that fraudulently. So I would ask that you enforce your law. We're a country of laws. The rule of law applies. I honor the Constitution in guiding us in that, but please, would you chase down those two sources of income and make sure that people who are renting are not also claiming homestead exemption as a permanent residence? Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments today. You too, Sylvia. Thank you, and we'll address that shortly. All right, we'll go to F on our agenda and deal with consent items. They are: requests for approval of forms 2096 through 2115 and 44112 through 44260 in the amount of $1,541,491. Item 2 is requests for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $92,942. Item 3 is requests, I can put my reading glasses on, for approval of the minutes on October 15th and October 8th. Item 4 is requests for the retirement agreement between Weber County and William Fall. Questions on those, Commissioners? I had a chance to sit down, go through those today, and they all appeared to be in order.
That's how I look down. Karen, I'd like to hear it. Ricky?
You bet. Good morning, Commissioners. We issued 11 purchase orders this week for $93,000. A third of that amount, or $34,000, was for the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and that was to go to purchase supplies for the TCG event. We had two items at 22%, which was about $21,000. One was for a compressor rebuild at the ice sheet, and the second one was a crack seal, purchase of crack seal for the roads department. As far as checks, we issued 305 checks this week for $1.5 million. A third of that amount, or $522,000, was for the transfer station, and that's for disposal fees. 13% or $200,000 is for paramedic services, a monthly payment, and 12% or $190,000 is our monthly contribution to the Weber Human Services Organization. We had three amounts for 7% or about just over $100,000. One was for the jail, and that was to cover mental and medical care for the inmates, as well as food and utilities. Another one was for public defender services, and then the third one was the use of transportation funds to go to Harrisville City for the project at 1100 North in Harrisville, and then a small amount to go towards 12th Street. And then 6% or $86,000 is the monthly contribution we make to the Convention Visitors Bureau.
Questions, Commissioners? I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept the items, the consent items as listed and presented on today's agenda. Item F on our agenda.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. All fair and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They're approved. Action items. G1, request for approval of the designation of a voter participation area, Mr. Daniel Wade. Welcome here today. We appreciate you coming.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you.
Good morning.
Earlier this year, the state legislature passed HB 119, which requires counties to establish voting participation areas to be used primarily for local initiative and referendum. Based on the recommendations that you provided us in a work session meeting in June of this year, Weber County Elections and the County GIS Department have created those eight required voter participation areas. You have been provided with a map of the participation areas, as well as a breakdown of the precincts and the voting populations that reside within those areas. So with that, we do ask you to approve the Weber County voter participation areas.
Commissioners, you have any questions?
No, I'm good.
I don't have any questions. You know, when we do go to our UAC meetings, which represent all 29 counties, it's wonderful to know that we represent a group of you folks in the elections that are touted as being the best in the business in the state. And you do a great job. Thank you, Daniel. And Ryan, you're here. Thank you.
I've got a motion.
Then, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll make a motion that we approve the designation of voter participation areas as presented by Mr. Wade.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All fair and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thanks, Mr. Wade. Appreciate it. Item G2, request for approval of contract between Weber County and Municipal Code Corporation, DVA Municipal Code, to allow the county to publish and maintain its codes and ordinances in-house. Mr. Ricky Hatch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The contract before you is an agreement that has been drawn up with Municipal Code Corporation. It's been reviewed and approved by our attorneys, purchasing, finance. Just a little background, so we publish our ordinances and code online. We've used Municipal Code Corporation to do this for about 10 years, well, about nine years now. We agreed with them back in 2010 after a competitive bid process. It costs quite a bit of money. When we make zoning changes or code changes, we pay them a fair amount. In fact, over the past three or four years, that has amounted to between $15,000 and $20,000 a year. They do the legal review, they format everything, make sure the cross-references check, and then make the changes so that citizens and county employees can search online and provide, find our ordinances and other information readily. Thanks to some heads-up thinking by some of our county employees, we approached them because of the cost and some of the cumbersome process of getting the code approved, or getting the invoices approved by the appropriate departments that made the change. Our own Fatima Fernelius, she came up with a suggestion or an idea and identified a potential service that MuniCode provides that could save us some money. She worked very closely with our legal team, as well as Charlie Ewart, and we brought them in to explore this new service, which is a self-publishing service, which takes some of the services that MuniCode provided before, and we actually take that on ourselves. It does, so in doing this, it does require the county to take on a little bit of extra work in-house, but not very much. And instead of paying $15,000 to $20,000 a year for this service, by moving to this new contract, we'll pay about $5,000 a year. So this heads-up thinking and the willingness of our excellent attorney's team, as well as our planning and zoning department and Fatima, it's going to save the county between $10,000 and $15,000 a year at very little additional help. So it's another example of innovative thinking from great employees and people willing to step up to help reduce costs for the taxpayers. So I'd answer any questions you have and would recommend approval.
Commissioners, any questions?
It sounds like a cost-saving measure that makes sense for everybody and is an expedite process. Are you ready for a motion?
I am ready for a motion.
I would move to approve the contract between Weber County and Municipal Code Corporation, DVA MuniCode, to allow the county to publish and maintain the code of ordinance in-house.
Second.
Very good. I have a motion and a second. All fair and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it passes unanimously. Fatima and Ricky, we thank you for your efforts there. Very, very good. All right. Third on our agenda day is a presentation by Mr. Scott Park and discussion on the intent of the county to change our tax levy. Scott, why don't you go ahead and explain that? Sylvia has interest in that, as did others in the audience today, and they want to know why we're doing this.
Thank you, Commissioners. So hopefully you can see the presentation.
Thank you.
Let me get the mouse over here so I can just click. All right, so what is being proposed is a shift in the tax rate. So the county would lower its general obligation tax rate. So that's the tax rate paid by all the citizens in the county, no matter where you live, in a city or in the unincorporated areas. We would lower that tax rate by $500,000, and we would also increase the unincorporated area, the unincorporated services fund tax rate by $364,000. So the purpose of this shift is to actually eliminate a subsidy that is currently being provided to the unincorporated residents by the residents of the county as a whole or the county's general fund more specifically. So what it does is about 94% of the residents will see a tax decrease, and 6% of the residents will see a tax increase. And so just to clarify what we're talking about when we say the unincorporated areas, so all the areas that are outside of an incorporated city are unincorporated areas of Weber County, and they're represented up here in those yellow areas, the light yellow. So most to the right of the screen that you see, and then also in the upper left, you'll see some areas that are outside of city boundaries. When you're outside of a city boundary, you don't have a city to provide certain services for you. So the county, you three, acting as mayors of that unincorporated area, provide the same type of services that any other city would provide. Those services include police protection and animal services, road maintenance, stormwater management, planning, zoning, engineering, code enforcement, building inspection. And as you provide those services, state statute requires that the entire cost of providing those services to the unincorporated areas be paid for by taxes or fees generated from the unincorporated areas. In other words, it's not legal to take a county-wide levy, a levy on all the citizens of the county, and use that just for the benefit of the unincorporated residents. Everybody has to pay their own way. Just like we don't take general county tax dollars and give it to Ogden City so Ogden City can provide services to its residents, we can't take general county tax dollars and give it to the unincorporated areas to provide residents to those services. So when I talk about services, that's actually defined in, or, excuse me, the cost of services, it's defined in state statute, and it includes your direct costs, like you would think, you know, the salt and the road base and the time of the driver who's pushing, you know, driving the plow truck. But it also includes the operation and maintenance of the equipment. It includes the cost of renting or using capital facilities, so that would be the road shop, it would be the space on the second floor here that's dedicated to the municipal services activities. And it also includes administrative costs, such as legal services, accounting services, human resources, and IT. Now, in the past, most of these administrative costs and building costs were being paid for out of the general fund, which means that the residents in all of the cities were helping to cover the administrative costs for running the unincorporated areas of the county, and that's actually not appropriate according to state statute. So what we are doing here is shifting the tax to correct this inequity. We're going to lower the taxes on the general areas that was being used previously to subsidize the service, and we're going to increase the levy on the unincorporated areas so that they cover the cost of the services they're providing or they're receiving. So what does this mean to actual individual residents? Well, every resident in the county, every resident, including unincorporated, incorporated, will see a decrease in the Weber County tax line of their tax bill next year in 2020. 6% of the residents in the county, those who live in the unincorporated areas, will see an increase in their unincorporated services line on their tax bill. A house that is worth $403,000 in the unincorporated area would see a tax increase from $29.26 to $58.52. So I just want to show what this means in context of all of the other rates in the county, all of the city tax rates in the county. So if you see down here in that last, that little box, the last bold line where it says Municipal Services Fund, no change, currently for a $403,000 house, residents are paying $29.26 a year for their unincorporated services. With this proposed increase, they'll be paying $58.52. That's still lower than the lowest city in Weber County, which is Plain City. So, and you can see all the different cities in there, Ogden City being the highest at $637.47 for that same value of a home. So we're still going to, our unincorporated residents are still paying an extremely low tax rate for the services that they are receiving. So from this point, we're going to have a couple of public hearings. There's going to be an open house on November 12th up in the Ogden Valley branch. There's going to be another one held on November 18th in Plain City, and then we'll actually hold a public hearing here in this room on November 26th to discuss these changes and as well as the tentative budget for the 2020 year. So that's the presentation, unless you have any specific questions for me that I can answer?
Commissioners, do you have any questions for this?
Don't have any questions, but I, sorry.
Don't have any questions, but I'd like to reserve comment before you complete.
Sure, go ahead. Right now, it's a good time to hear you.
So, Mr. Park, 94% of the people in Weber County will see a tax decrease from Weber County?
100% of the people will see a decrease from Weber County, in the Weber County line, yes. Everybody will see the general fund line go down.
That's right, because we're actually lowering the whole.
Yes. So even those residents in the unincorporated areas will see their general fund line go down. 94% of the residents will see a net tax decrease, as in their taxes will go down more than they go up. The 6% will see their taxes go up more than they went down, so that's why we say 6% see a net tax increase. 94% see a net tax decrease, but really, everybody receives a small tax decrease, and the unincorporated residents receive the tax increase.
Appreciate that explanation. Thank you. So to persons such like Mrs. Salisbury, who said, "Hey, listen, my taxes have gone up," how would you, how could you explain that?
So Mrs. Salisbury, as I recall, lives in Ogden City.
That's correct.
Each entity, there are 91 taxing entities in Weber County, that when you get your tax bill, it's actually like a grocery store receipt of a whole bunch of different items on there. Now, when it comes across as one bill, Weber County is just acting as the collecting agent. We're not the ones levying the taxes. So Ogden City can raise their taxes, Ogden School District can raise its taxes, Water and Sewer District, Cemetery District, Special Service Districts, there's a lot of taxing entities that may have raised their taxes. Now, I'm not familiar with the specific tax notice, so I can't see which taxes went up or down. We can look at that and identify that, but Weber County Corporation tax rate did not go up last year.
So if the value of a person who lives in Ogden City, if the value of their home went from $300,000 to $330,000, or, excuse me, $300,000 to $330,000, that's a 10% increase, can you explain how that 10% increase in value relates to their tax notice?
So this is a little more tricky of a question, and I may defer to Mr. Hatch if he wants to take this question or I can answer it otherwise.
I'll give it a try, and then you can fix it. Okay, so Utah is what's called a revenue-neutral state, which means there are only two ways that an entity or a county can increase somebody's property taxes. One way, or, sorry, that they can increase the amount of taxes that they receive. One way is called new growth. The new growth is when there's a previously undeveloped piece of land that somebody builds and develops a building of some sort on it. That increases the value of the land, therefore, the taxes on that new increased value is additional revenue to the county. The second way that the county can increase the amount of funds that it receives is through increasing the tax, increasing the county's budget by saying, "Okay, last year we spent $85 million. This year we would like to spend $90 million." And to do that, by state law, the county has to go through a series of public hearings and notices and meetings called truth and taxation process. The way it works in a county is the county establishes a budget, and by law, we cannot make that budget any larger than it was last year. The State Tax Commission tells us what our budget can be. It says you had this much new growth, and so with that new growth, your new budget is this amount. And if, we have to go through truth and taxation if we exceed that amount. Now, what happens is we establish the budget, so the county doesn't really establish the tax rate. We establish the budget that we want and need, and then we go through a fairly complex process of parsing that budget out to all the 95-plus-thousand properties in the county. And it's based off of the property value, so it's divvied out amongst all of those. Every city does the same thing in their process, and the school district does the same thing. Those property values in different parts of the county go up and down in value depending on where the hot market is and how things are happening in the various cities and neighborhoods. And our county assessor, his role is to identify those values as accurately as they possibly can, as you can with a small staff identifying 95,000, the value of 95,000 parcels. And so as they make those assignments, that impacts the value of the home. Now, if in a really interesting world where every single parcel in the county doubled in value in one year, that would happen, and because of the way the revenue-neutral law states in Utah, the house values would double, the property tax rate would be cut in half, and taxes would remain constant. So if every house in the county went up, every property doubled and tripled in value, quadrupled, the tax rate would correspondingly decrease so that the amount of dollars collected doesn't change. Now, obviously, if we went back and looked at every one of our parcels, personally, we would see that our taxes go up and down each year. Generally, on average, over the past 10 years, eight of the 10 years, our taxes have gone up. So the reasons behind that are, one, property values in the county, some go up, and some go up high, and some go up a little, and some actually decrease year by year. go up high, and some go up a little, and some actually decrease year by year. If you're in an area that, where your property value has increased greater than the average amount of properties, property value in, in the county, then your taxes will be a little bit higher, your tax dollar amount will be a little bit higher that year. The following year, it could be the exact opposite. There's just an ebb and flow. But also, keep in mind, on your property tax bill, the county accounts for about 20% of your entire property tax bill, depending on what city you live in and, and school district and what the rates are there. And so, the county, in this case, may be decreasing property tax, but perhaps the school district, or a city, or a cemetery district, or abatement district, or water, they might be increasing their taxes. And if that's the case, any savings you might see from the county reducing the tax could be surpassed or negated completely by a tax increase by another entity. So really, the, the two ways that your property taxes could go up are if your home value increased higher than the average home values in the rest of the county, or if one or more of the entities that are listed on your property tax notice, and most tax notices have between 10, 10 and 12 different taxing entities that are on there, if they choose to increase their rates. Okay, Mr. Park, please correct any false doctrine that I've provided.
So the short answer is, if your home went from $300,000 to $330,000, will your taxes go up or down? Well, that was a 10% increase. The question is, what happened to your neighbor's house? If the average went up more than 10%, you may be paying a smaller share. If the average went up less than 10%, you may be paying a higher share. The county doesn't get any more money, it's just how we cut up that pie. So your home going up in value or down in value doesn't really matter, it just depends on what it did in comparison to everybody else.
Thank you very much. Let me address a couple other things, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
It was brought up in another comment today, and I appreciate that explanation. So your presentation today, as it relates to the county portion of the tax on those 10 to 12 items that are on a tax notice, the county portion on that tax will go down for everyone.
Correct.
That's a, a kept promise then by my two commissioner friends, that they would lower the tax, and that's exactly what's happening, isn't it?
Yes.
Very good. Another thing, it was mentioned by Ms. Menzies about Airbnb and VRBO, to be specific, as it relates to rental units. Just yesterday, I want to report on that since it was brought up just yesterday, the Visit Ogden, or the Ogden CVB reported, and, and I can attest to this, having paid it recently, that Airbnb does collect tax and remits to this county the taxes. They do that at time of checkout. So once the rates are there and you go through and check everything, then additional amount of taxes collected for transient room tax, and then Airbnb submits that to the respective counties. Now, VRBO has not been doing that, but they will start doing that in their software on the 1st of November this year. So that's another good win for Weber County. So we've been looking at that for the last little while, and we realize that there could be something. But unfortunately, through state law, and Mr. Ulliberry reminded me, that it is against the law for a public entity to go after any one of those, and so we may have to look at something through state law to, to do that. But we're not allowed to do that any more than what we've done, and so that's where we are. I appreciate the work you've done there very, very much, Mr. Park, Mr. Hatch, and your, your team. It's been, it's been a great thing to be a part of, and speaking as one, this is important. You have a commission body of three right now. 66.666667% of us will personally be negatively affected by this, but will, I plan on supporting it. I think we all do. I don't know, I won't speak for you, Commissioner, but...
I have a couple of questions, if I might, when Commissioner Harvey is finished.
Finally.
Yes, Commissioner Furrow.
So Sean, could, or Scott, could you go back to your slide that shows the tax rates, city tax rates? So as I understand this, even with the proposed increase, we are still below the next city above us, which would be Plain City by somewhat of a margin.
That is correct.
And we're well below right now, and so I look at this, again, and as Commissioner Harvey alluded to, I actually live in unincorporated, so this does impact me directly. But I look at what I pay on my Ogden City tax bills, and speaking of, you know, taxing entities and my businesses, my real estate, I get taxed by Ogden City. You can look at the difference between the, for a business, between $73.92 to the 805.28 that you see for Ogden City. And that has to do with a number of factors, but the primary factor is the services we provide. Are we giving value to our county residents? And this was a deep dive for, for us as commissioners to look at this, on this municipal service fund. It was a situation where, because of state law, we're required to make sure that we don't create artificial subsidies. I actually sat on the Rev and Tax Committee for the state of Utah for a number of years. One of the issues we dealt with when this legislation was, was changed or amended, was that exact factor, that we had counties out there that were sub, that had tax policies in place that allowed one municipality, or gave the municipality advantage over unincorporated area, or vice versa. And that's the reason the statute was passed, is the legislature felt, and statutes in place, and I personally feel that the proper tax policy is that if a person or a business receives a service, they should pay for that service. And I shouldn't be subsidized by somebody else, and vice versa. I shouldn't have to subsidize somebody else. So that's the reason for the statute. I supported the statute then, I support it now. We took an oath as commissioners to abide and support both the state and federal legislation, and I intend to do that today. So this goes above just a shift. This goes to the heart of what I truly believe we as taxpayers deserve, which is equitable treatment under the law. And that's what this does. And it basically balances the fact that some unincorporated areas have been subsidizing other areas in the past, or municipalities in this case, have been subsidizing unincorporated. So, again, I plan on supporting this measure. I appreciate Mr. Park's good work on this. We, as you well know, we've spent countless hours looking at this and deciding the best course forward, the best path that we take this. And with the general tax decrease for 100%, I want to make sure that we understand that 100% of our residents will receive the tax decrease. Those people that have been receiving a subsidy from other parts of the county or other municipalities will see an increase, myself included. That's fair. That's an equitable tax policy, which I support.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Ulliberry is in the audience. John, could you come up and make a comment about the process you go through to, to value properties and homes, and how it ebbs and flows, and how you adjust that? Very, it's quite complicated, but it's very fascinating, the science by where, what you do every year.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner, for the opportunity. What we do is, we value 95,000 taxable properties in Weber County. We do that through a number of different ways, but one of the ways that we do it is we use something called multiple regression analysis. And so, to break it down in its simplest terms, we take the information from properties that have sold, that's pertinent to the market, so size, location, quality, condition, so on and so forth, and we put it in the computer. The, our system analyst, DeeDee Kimber, she runs a model, and it gives us a line item adjustment for each one of those things. And so that's, I could go into the statistics behind it, but I don't want to put anybody into a coma. But that's the long and the short of it, and we do it very well, and we do it very cheaply, by the way. We, as we've talked about before, we are the most efficient second-class county in the state, first or second-class county in the state, and we're more efficient than most third-class counties, as far as dollars per parcel that we spend.
Okay, so I just want people to understand that our assessor's office analyzes properties in your area and values the things in your area according to properties that have sold and changed hands. And so this is, this isn't magic. He goes out there and does it based on sales of property that have taken place, and so the, the science bears this out, that this is what's happening to property in your area. Secondly, if you don't like what's happened to you in your area, you have the ability to protest that change, and he will come out and work with you on that. If he has to, he'll come right to your place and reappraise it. But I'm just telling you, it's, it's amazing to watch how fluid their operation is and how fair it is. And we appreciate what you do there, John.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And your team.
And your team, yeah.
It's really all the team.
It truly is.
Thank you.
Truly it is. Thank you. All right. So Sylvia, to you and others in the audience, that's a lengthy explanation. You can see how I couldn't just answer it in a moment, but it's, it gives you the full breadth today of what's happening here, and what we're trying to do. If people say, well, how do I know, living in the county, that unincorporated, that the others are, the others are, what am I looking for? Subsidizing the amount we pay. How do I know that that's happening? Well, in 2013, when the law went into effect, the next year, we started the Municipal Services Account in Weber County. They transferred some money into it to make it whole, and they started that at that time. Well, since that time, that, and we keep track of every service that we offer and who's getting it, that's gone down. That amount that was in there, that's savings, and it is going down more and more and more, and this year, that's going to go broke, because there's not enough money in there. So just simply by looking at it, doing nothing else, you can see that the, they are not paying their way for the services that we're giving them, unincorporated Weber County. Now, we're doubling the, as you can see by the presentation, we're doubling their taxes in unincorporated Weber County. And frankly, none of us could bring it upon ourselves to do more than double, but it should go up a little more than double to really get to where it needs to go. So we're doubling it today, or we're going to, and then we will see where that takes us. And on these charts and graphs that Mr. Park gives us, he's got lines, and he always talks about bending the line and changing the projection, and what that does is change the long-term projection. So where we are today, that line goes down just like that. So this will bend the line, and it'll bend it flatter. Now, to the exact amount, it's always a guess, you project it, but things change, and the unincorporated county's building more homes, and we're getting a little more revenue off of them, and so we'll see where this takes us after the double. And we have high hopes that we won't have to do any more, but I suspect we'll be back here in a year or two looking at this again. Very good. So normally, we don't open this up at this point, but I'm going to ask, if anybody in the audience has any questions that we have not addressed today, it's pretty, we've hit it in a very detailed, at a very detailed level. All right, well, it looks like we've answered all the questions then. So commissioners, what's your pleasure on this? I don't know that we're looking, Scott, are you looking for a motion?
No, so this is just a presentation. We're required by law to present this in a commission meeting.
You are.
The tentative budget will be, we'll present that to you next week, next Tuesday, and ask you to approve the tentative budget. It'll sit out there for three weeks while everybody has a chance to review it, and then come to a public hearing on the 26th. We're also going to have some open houses so people can get some more answers, so we really aren't going to take any action on this until after the 26th of November.
Very good. And you can see, all you folks in the audience, and those that are watching this recording, that November 12th and November 18th are your chance to come and talk to us in person. We will all be there personally, and we will have an opportunity to deep dive. If you want to know how it'll affect you specifically in the area you live in, this is when we'll, we'll be able to do that. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Park.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make one comment.
Yes, please.
Talk about taxes, if you'd allow.
Commissioner Furrow.
So if you have received your tax notice, which I understand people in the audience have, you'll notice some major changes in that notice this year, and I want to give credit to Mr. John Bond and the assessor's office. One of the areas that we wanted to make sure was more transparent or clarified was exactly where those taxpayer dollars are going. As was mentioned here, there's 91 some districts. If you look at your tax bill, I can almost guarantee you that probably 55% of that or more went to your local school districts, and the balance was somewhere in between the mention here, we had 20%. So sometimes the county takes credit for receiving 100% of that tax bill, which obviously, if you read that tax bill, is not correct. It'll show in detail where those dollars are being spent. And as was mentioned here before, everybody that lives in Weber County has the opportunity to attend their school district, their service districts, when there's a truth and taxation hearing, when they increase the rate. So as, as Mr. Hatch mentioned, one of the ways to increase taxes is a truth and taxation hearing. Everybody that's a public, a member of the public, has the ability to attend those truth and taxation hearings, and to be heard. So you do have a voice. If you have questions, please look at that tax notice. Now, I think we have some truth and taxation hearings still possibly on the agenda that you'll be able to attend in the future, but be aware of that as you receive those tax notices, and look where those increases took place. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, two things I'd like to mention. First of all, if you will go to the back pages of your newspaper, there's a column that has public notices, and you really need to look through those. Nobody ever looks through those because they're boring and who wants to know? But that notice actually tells you who's increasing taxes, the notices put in there, and where their hearings and meetings are that you can attend. So, and it does, you know, it's not hard to, to find that, you just have to spend a moment to read through them. It's that simple, and it's right there. You can see it in just a few minutes. You can determine what's going to happen and who's doing what. Secondly, I want to thank Commissioner Harvey. On your tax notice, you'll see a pie chart this year for the first time, that tells you the percentages of where your taxes are at. And Commissioner Harvey's been pushing that for years now, and he pushed John Bond right into a corner. It happened this year. And we have a very unique tax notice now compared to the rest of the state, but it's a wonderful tax notice that tells us exactly what's happening. And so we've tried to increase transparency here. Wasn't that what you'd say? You care to comment on that?
No, it's just, everyone, I was always getting a bar chart at the bottom of my tax notice, and a bar chart's great if you compare it against other bar charts, but it's tough to take a bar chart and compare it against itself. So a pie chart is, it's always, people understand those a little better, and so it made the person, they get, most people see a tax notice once a year. They're not used to it, they don't look at it every day, but they sure look at it in that November time period, October, November time period. It makes it easier to understand, so we, it's the same information, it's just viewed at an easier way. And like you said, Commissioner Furrow and Commissioner Jenkins, it's, it's, it's definitely more transparent, and that's what I think our responsibilities are, so we're, we're getting there.
Great, great. Very good. Well, with that, then we'll move to the next item on our agenda. Next item on our agenda is Item H, Public Hearing, and to do this, I need a motion to adjourn this meeting and go into a public hearing.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair. Public meeting and convening to public hearing.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. We're in a public hearing now. The purpose of this public hearing is to talk about a piece of property that we're considering selling. Sean, why don't we go ahead and turn this over to you?
Thank you, commissioners.
All right. Commissioners, the property in red is a piece of property that Weber County owns out in the Weber Industrial Park. This is adjacent to our shooting range that the county owns out there, and...
The shooting range is on the bottom of the page, picture.
Correct. In blue, yes. Yep. So, the county owns all of the property in blue. We also own the piece in red, and that is what the county is considering selling. Now, the county's code regarding disposing of real property states that if a piece of property is a significant parcel of real property, which means it has a value in excess of a hundred thousand dollars or is more than ten acres in area, then the county commission will hold a public hearing to give people a chance to comment or express interest in the property. And that is the purpose of this public hearing today. So, I don't really have any other information other than this is the public hearing that's required by our code, this is the property in question, and Commissioners, I'm open to any questions you may have, or you're welcome to comment, and then open it up for public comments.
So, basically, Sean, we did not go looking to sell this. They came, doesn't want to buy it.
Correct. There, we do have a potential buyer who has approached Weber County about purchasing this property.
Right. And the reason, of course, we would want to sell it, I'm of the opinion, now, this is my personal opinion, these folks don't want to move, and they need room to grow.
That's correct.
And we want to help them grow. And this is a piece of property that I guess you could say was land-banked. It's a piece that we're not presently using. The way that we've developed the property, we had, this sits outside of it, and in their request to us, we, as a commission, could see no reason not to sell it. Now, I guess I should say aye as a commissioner. You two should probably represent yourself here. But I felt like there was no reason not to sell this. Commissioners, do you want to comment, either of you?
Yeah, I think that's exactly right. If you look at that, my understanding, at least what I've been told, is the building, you can see to the west of the red, where our property is, is anticipating expanding and needs the expansion to maintain their operation, Weber County, to move to the east with additional building areas, what I've been told. And that's a logical place for them. As we looked at this site, I think back in December, January of last year, it appeared that this was not going to be a site that the county needed for future expansion, and that was the reason that we at least gave the preliminary approval to move forward with. I believe there was an appraisal ordered and preliminary negotiations, if I'm not wrong, Sean.
That is correct, yes.
So, yeah, speaking personally, I think there's some issues still to be resolved with the contract. I had a discussion this morning with Mr. Crockett and Cortland, and I think we'll have those resolved in the next period of time. But at least in my opinion, this probably makes sense for Weber County and to encourage this business to expand, to look a little deeper into this potential sale.
Yes, you're correct, Commissioner.
The, Mr. Chair, the previous shooting complex director, Eric Jones, submitted to me that he had met with the sheriff and with the Weber Fire District about using that specific piece of property for additional purpose of training, some kind of a building in the future that might work for training. And he says it just doesn't contain the amount of square footage of property or shape needed to do something like that that could grow. So, with that, that rec, I don't really have any qualms about it, except to make sure that the service for the three-hundred-yard range and the electrical service, which sits inside that red boundary, we make sure that we have, we need to make sure we can service the three-hundred-yard range with the road, and then also our electrical service. So, but this takes a piece of property that we're currently not collecting tax on, and then we would now would collect tax on. So, how do we control our taxes, or how do we lower taxes? Like Mr. Park, just, we do things like this that help us, and so, we don't have to increase with the economy. So, this is, this could be a good move.
Very good. Sean, anymore?
That's all I have, Commissioners.
Very good. We'll go to the public comment portion of this then. If there's anybody here today who would like to stand up and comment on this possible sale that we're looking at, now would be the time to do that. We would love to hear from you. Please step forward.
All right.
I'd just like to know where this is. Just curious.
It's out in the Weber Industrial Park, right next to our shooting complex out there. So, north of town, north of Harrisville.
North, it's even further north than the fairgrounds, Sylvia.
Yeah.
Yeah, just north of the fairgrounds. It's on Rulon-White Boulevard and just south of 2700 North.
Well, very good. All right, we will close the public comment, and I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing and move back into a public meeting.
Second down.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes unanimously. All right, we're now back in our regular meeting. There was a discussion whether we were going to take action on this today or not. We haven't quite tidied up the detail on, as you're looking at this, in the very lower left-hand corner of that red square, there's a white dot. And we're still messing around with that white dot, just a hair. So, we're not going to take a action on this today because we have to make sure that that happens to be the electrical service to our complex, and it's in that property. And so, we've got to, we've got to come to a resolution on that. But other than that, correct?
Yes, Commissioners, that's correct. As we move forward with this sale, we'll have to address the utilities, the landscaping, the parking, all of those issues. We'll get an engineered cost estimate of what that will be, and we'll negotiate all the details that will go into an easement if that's the way we choose to go.
Great. Good. All right. So, Commissioners, any other comments?
Last one.
Yes.
I want to give a shout out right now to Colonial Flag, of all people. I'm coming in from left field on this. But Colonial Flag held a groundbreaking ceremony about five weeks ago out towards the front of that property. Will you put your marker on that, towards the front? Keep right there. Just a little further back to the, anyway, right in there. The largest flag north of Salt Lake City will be placed right there at that shooting complex. It's, there's a little fundraiser going on, and ninety percent of the funds have been raised by private enterprise already. It'll be solely funded by private, but it'll be the largest flag in northern Utah. Will be placed right there, and you'll be able to see it from north Ogden and all the way, the freeway driving up. Three hundred and thirty feet or something like that. It's enormous. So, it'll be wonderful.
Great. That's great. Very good. Well, if that's the case, we'll go to the next item on the agenda. Thank you, Sean. So, Item I, Commissioner Comments. Commissioners? Gage?
I don't think I have much less, more to say, so I'll turn it over to Commissioner Harvey.
Commissioner Harvey?
I'll go with Gage on that.
Okay, then we're going to go to, under Commissioner Comments, I'm going to give some time to John Yulbury to talk about our Stall of Fame winner.
Thank you, Commissioners. I really appreciate that. We're actually kind of ambushing the recipient. We didn't tell her that she received it. So, Jackie, would you come, come up and stand up here with me? So, while Jackie's coming up, I'd like to make some comments about Jackie Cole.
Please.
Jackie is a perfect representation of the type of team member we look for in the assessor's office. She is sassy, she is classy, and she's a little smart-alecky. In all seriousness, Jackie is a wonderful part of our office. She is an important part of our team, as evidenced by her coworker of the year award awarded to her by her office mates. Her contributions extend well beyond how well she performs her job, which is fantastic, by the way. Jackie always does her work plus more. Some examples are, Jackie's always ready to assist her teammates with customers at the front counter without anybody asking her. It's like she has this extra sense of when somebody needs some help. Oftentimes, that's her department head when he looks lost. Once Jackie completes her work, she will ask a teammate if anyone needs or wants any help. She helps with tasks that are beyond the scope of her position. She makes everything run smoothly, which we all know, anybody that's administered in an office, you need to have somebody like Jackie there because she makes your life just absolutely heavenly. She assists and supports new hires. She never demeans them when they make mistakes. Instead, she shows them alternatives and helps them understand the correct way to complete the task. Beyond all of Jackie's exemplary work is Jackie herself. She is simply a great person, and that's the real reason why she is so important to us. Jackie is pleasant, and she is kind. She also seems to know how to lighten the mood, even going to the extreme of telling a teammate who's having an exceptionally bad day that they were an ugly crier to lighten the mood. And this really made them laugh. Jackie's a member of our party committee. She makes delicious food, and she even gently guises socially awkward among us in a uniquely Jackie way that makes everybody feel good. I'm proud to have Jackie as a member of our team, and she is a well-deserving recipient of the Stall of Fame Award.
Thank you very much. I think we should now follow this with applause. So, Stacy, we're going to get a good picture of her.
Yes, come on.
I should get one. Oh. Stupid. I have a crown in my office. I really have set it up.
I have it right here.
Okay.
We're going to give you a little, so the Stall of Fame, you get a partner's stall, right? And you put your key on it.
Thanks. No, I think I'm good. John said so much more than that. Thanks.
So, this is an end to a wonderful meeting. We thank everybody for attending today, and Jackie, congratulations to you. And with that, I'm open for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.